...tumblebridge district staff, thank you very much for having me represent AngloAmerican. I can provide you with an update on the business and how AngloAmerican's team is proceeding. So actually just maintaining the site. Before I continue, Mayor, would you like to welcome me back to your podium. Glad to see you healthy and strong, so we're happy to hear from you.
Not strong yet, but yeah.
I'm pretty sure. Just some background, it is a little bit less than a year ago that AngloAmerican provided an update to the Tumblebridge District Council in Vancouver as part of actually a visit with the district provided by AngloAmerican itself. And we just thought it was a part of helping announce a, have a model one in terms of actually just keep you up to date with what we're doing, what we said we were going to be doing last year and how we're accomplishing those targets. And also the new businesses in the new areas that we're currently looking at to see how we can remedy or address. You guys are very familiar with the history of Bees River Coal, so I won't mention it too far, but as you know, we've had several years of production. We were one of the first product mines in the area. We were also perhaps actually the last one to inform the district council as well as actually the community that were putting our mindset into care maintenance. Since then, we've been looking into regional development areas. At the beginning of this year, the board of directors of AngloAmerican decided to centralize or focus their attention and their strategy on three core assets or three core business areas that AngloAmerican has been managing for a long time. Diamonds, platinum, and coal. As a result of the decision that we took, the subsequent decision was obviously to start divesting the two other business areas which AngloAmerican decided to step out from, one being Aramark and the other one, coal. Bees River Coal is part of actually our coal assets, so as you are familiar and something with council and mayor at that time, the intention is at a certain point divest the asset. Does that mean that we have a mine for sale right now? No, we don't. We think the asset is extremely valuable. We think the potential is extremely significant given the investment that AngloAmerican has put in the area, even the regional development that we have, the quality of the coal. And therefore, we think that actually we were better off at this point making sure that we increase the value of the asset by maintaining it properly and making, taking the right steps at this point to make sure that we can actually see that a well-run organization is taken on by somebody else who can concentrate on the production of the asset. We announced our care maintenance team at the beginning of 2014. The team hasn't changed with the exception of one individual, so there is a ability in terms of actually a team that is maintained in the area. We maintain our asset. And here's a list of actually our team, starting with Darren Mowery, who's a mine manager of the Bees River Coal operations. We have Michael Patson, our environmental manager, and then we have John McNeil, who's actually our operations superintendent. We have a number of other different contractors that are actively at site, helping us out with our demonstration water treatment facility, for example, or with other areas of the business. As you know, I reside in Vancouver, my office is there, but I'm here at least once a month to support a team and also to address any other areas that I actually may need. What is our focus around care maintenance? It hasn't changed as indicated last year, right? We still have the area of safe protocols being a critical area. We keep actually just up to date with the protocols that we need to take and undertake for the periods of the seasons that we have during the winter, during the summer, during the fresh head. So we have a team that is constantly being proven to the test in terms of actually making sure that we have acknowledgement of what are the areas of risks and what are the protocols that we're going to take to ensure that the team is sustained. One of the areas that we have somewhat improved, for example, last year was ensuring that trails that the team has to go through and proceed to a water sampling are up to standards of AngloAmerican to ensure the safety. Nobody is allowed to go to any sampling unless they are with a better companion or unless they have a GPS assigned system that will allow us to tell right away where they're located and being able to assist them if an emergency were to happen. Before I continue, any questions? We were very successful at establishing a good reputation thanks to the hard work of the Tumblebridge community, thanks to our efforts in making sure that we would actually find ways, creative ways, to make sure that we would be able to continue with the development of coal resource in the area. We committed a number of things to government and we're pretty proud we have delivered a whole lot of this. Few examples of the main areas of actually concern and we raised our standard and applied the American standards, where on Carrick, for example, we were still actually, we were the first mining company that decided to take our land from our own tenures that were intended to be, because that's coal. And instead, we decided to secure them for Carrick Habitat. There is a number of changes in the Carrick Habitat policies undertaken at this point and we'll be actively participating to see how we can assist on that. On reclamation, we increased our plan significantly from 6.8 million to 45 million. You may be familiar with the discussions that have been undertaken as a result of the general report. We feel that actually the amount that we have put forward as the body increases makes a case of how we are answering to that concern. On insubordination, the demonstration water treatment facility that we have put in our site is the first one in the northwest, northeast of British Columbia. So we're still testing it, we're still seeing good results, changing the science, changing the technology within the demonstration water treatment facility to see what works best so that actually when development starts once again, we'll have the right technology that they're in front of us. Now, in terms of permitting, last year, when we met in Vancouver, I explained that as a result of the announcement of care maintenance, there were a number of changes that would actually need to be taking place in the permitting process. And why is that? Simply put, nobody was, nobody foresaw that there would be a time of care maintenance for it. So many, oh, sorry, I was a little confused. Nobody foresaw the area of care maintenance. And as a result of that, a lot of the permits that have been put forward by government, Ministry of Environment and Ministry of Energy and Mines are described as the mine continuing into mine throughout the next 20 years, which is the life of the mine itself. There was never a perception that it would be a pause of five to seven years or longer depending on the market. That changes a number of, a number of things and that's where actually we did this study. So as we spent a year last year, what we did, we brought in our team, we looked into the permitting process for the Mines Act and also for the Effluent and Environmental Management Act permits that we received. And we looked at those that would require some changes because of the constraints that we have at this point. One that presented itself that required immediate attention was a requirement by the Environmental Management Act subsection 5.1. I indicated, quote, "that there will be a second water treatment plant that will be in operation by March 31st, 2017." When that was drafted, obviously the expectation was that we would be mining around 2.5 tons of coal per year as of the time of permitting, which was September 2014. So obviously, there was, there was not one ton of coal that was mined from the Trent Rock Mine since December 2014. And thanks to that, we've been able to see, we've been able to actually use this time to really study selenium and see the impacts of this period of care maintenance, even though it's still short, right? And what that has an effect in different areas and the water sheds and the creeks, right? And we also have anticipated, obviously, that there is not, the load of coal that is going to be thrown or into the sheds is not going to impact in a sense of case of needing a second water treatment facility. We do acknowledge that actually when we restart operations, a second water treatment and possibly a third one will be required, right? And also depending on the technology that we have in our time. But we made a case that we were asked by government to put the first, as I said before, demonstration water treatment facility in northeast of British Columbia here to test the technology to see how things would work. And we think that we've been able to identify a good technology, but it still needs improvement. We've been able to target the areas that it was needed. Water treatment facility, for example, is discharging a level of selenium which was expected. What it's not doing at this point is taking the load of capacity of water that it was expected to need. So because of that, this is still within the people who actually have put it together and the contractors, the consultants. Consequently, what we are doing is working with them to improve their technology and make sure that they actually meet those standards we need, right? And we've been keeping, we've been keeping government and yourselves very well up to date in terms of actually how the things are just going to look. The expectation is that in the next year or so, when we feel that a technology has met what is required, we can do some other studies to see what else can we do to improve selenium so that when the mine starts up again and a new water treatment facility will be required, then we'll have the right technology that is right there. Any questions at this point?
I'm going to wait till the end.
So it is important to point out though, that also it is expected from the mine, whether it's in care maintenance or not, to update the Ministry of Environment, the Ministry of Energy and Mines and subsequently yourselves through this then, on what is going on with selenium in our site. And this is usually done through what we call the selenium management plan update. So every year, the mine, in this case, the Trent Rock Mine, puts together a selenium management plan update, which says what has been working, what hasn't been working, what have been successful, the successful areas that we need to address or actually the things that we need to work with. And that is expected of us and is part of the permitting. So you are more than welcome to read the report if desired and actually you can see all the content and the technical elements if you think we need to pursue that. So as I indicated before, and as I briefed the council last year, we have decided to pursue the permanent application to request the fairing of the water treatment facility. Given the fact, the rationale being specifically, first, the technology needs to still be improved. Second of all, the selenium levels notice to fight an additional water treatment facility because we're in a period of care maintenance, right? And three, there is a number of different areas of mitigation options that we are looking as in the mine to see how we can address the selenium levels that we personally have, not causing any effect in our environmental impacts, significant, that's what I'm saying. With that, we have commissioned a number of studies, for example, a water model for SRK. We have had Goldr doing a number of different studies in our mine for the last more than five years in terms of actually just trying to see whether there has been any significant environmental effect that's restored in the selenium discharge that we make it. And we're happy to report that nothing has been presented, nothing has been shown in terms of actually a significant environmental effect to aquatic life or to the plants or actually within areas within our work area. What do we want to do and what have we asked our government to look at? And I'm sorry. Is there a these room here?
Yep.
But you wouldn't focus on the team?
Okay. So I will beg actually to just forgive me here for the small.
Just give me just a little time, Warren.
Yes?
We try and keep them to about 15 minutes.
Perfect. How am I doing so far?
Here at about 12.
Oh, wow. Okay. So very quick, right there, as you can see in the second paragraph right there, it says that we're expected to, the second water treatment facility must be in operation by March 31st, 2017. We are asking to scratch that and to make sure that actually includes something in there saying that the mine will not restart operations unless a water treatment, a water, sorry, a selenium management plan for the restart of operations has been approved by government. So we thought about continuously about how to put this forward. We wanted to make sure that district, the Ministry of Environment, the Ministry of Energy and Mines felt that they had, they had no risk associated with deferring the, what the new water treatment facilities expected in plan. And the only way to do that is to ensure that actually they have the ability to approve or not if we can restart operations, right? So we were very transparent, there was no intention of any other agenda, but simply just to say the water treatment facility needs to be needing proper technology, are now working on that. So it doesn't make sense to be investing an amount of money at this point when a technology has not proven itself quite. I will run into asset management. What are we doing with the rest of the areas that we have at this point? In terms of equipment, you may be aware, we have been doing a number of sales of that equipment that we think will become obsolete by the time of restart of operations. That has been done mainly through auctioneers in the different areas of the region. Many of the appliances, many of the TV screens that actually had and we thought that we could use have been offered and have been donated to charity organizations of the Tumblebridge district and as well as actually the tourism office. It is important to mention that we still have screens, we still have a number of TVs and if Mayor and Council believe that there are some other areas where we could actually utilize that by donating them, then we'd be more than happy to do this with that. In terms of the downtown office, another offer, just in case you may need some space, we have a lease there until 2018, providing to continue with it, obviously, but the office obviously is not being used because most of our team is presently outside helping in every hour of tour. So if you think that council, the district, the staff, anybody else would make good use of that area, we'd be more than happy to support you to facilitate access and facilitate the technology, the equipment that we have there. Lastly, the hotel. As you can see right there, we've been operating despite the losses for the last three years. We do are actually at this point reviewing the number of different options that we may have available on us to see whether actually we can keep it operating. We had a long, we had a commitment with the district through an agreement, it was called the tripartite agreement. And I believe that tripartite agreement is coming to an expiry date soon. AngloAmerican recognizes the seriousness of the issue. We think the hotel is of substantial importance to the, to the town, especially in the areas of tourism. We want to make sure that we find a way to keep it operating, yet we don't think we're going to be able to break even, but at least have less overall loss. So we would be more than happy if Mayor and Council and Jordan feels that it's adequate to have a site table and discuss the different options and brainstorm, brainstorm different ideas that we may have to facilitate the continued operation of the hotel itself.
Please press any key on your touchtone keypad to remain in conference.
And we will make sure that actually we inform you of anything that would happen as well. I don't think you need to be alarmed, it is just our responsibility and we have always done that, give you a proper update, a long-term update and actually also inviting the conversations so that we can make a collective decision right then and so forth. With that, I've gone beyond my ability to leave, so thank you for your time and I won't do any questions.
Do you have any questions?
I have one.
Counselor.
With the expectancy of mines being 20 years, when it fires backup, how, how much more time does it have?
Still, and the very fortunate thing about our mine is that it was approved a year, a year and a half before it was, it was called for care maintenance.
Okay.
At that time, Trent, the first mine, was pretty much depleted. It had run its course, but then Roman was approved. And when Roman was approved, it extended the life of the mine for another 20 years.
Okay, so it's really untouched yet, it'll have to grow. Thank you.
And it is important to point out that as technology progresses, as things develop, we have identified areas within Trent that now can be accessed or developed. So when you combine it into mines, the extension of the, the life of the mine could be over.
Okay, thank you.
How far downstream are you measuring for selenium?
Selenium?
Yeah, selenium.
Yeah, we're actually, we have three areas where we assess it, and in three different multiple areas. So actually, one of our, one of the hard work that we have is that we do daily sampling. So we have more or less 35, 34 sites where we have to go and actually water sample on a daily basis or a monthly basis and quarterly basis to ensure that we have actually those quality, that quality information. So we tested on Gordon Creek, we tested on Batcock, and then we tested on where they meet, which is on Flatbed. So we have a very good diagram. We were talking about precipitation. So as you may see, this chart right here, and I can, I'd be more than happy to provide you answer, may I stand?
Yeah.
This actually is, is a chart that provides the information of selenium levels on aderage, I should point out, right? From 2012 all the way until 2000, until mid 2015, sorry, 16, right? In terms of selenium levels that we have identified in Gordon Creek, right? So you can see, and then the chart below, which is the Trent precipitation, we're talking about water, and you can see right there that the normal aderage of water that we have seen at the mine site for the last six years has been consistent to what you see right there in 2014, which is the blue. The red is the anomaly that happened last year, the quantity of rain that we received that nobody was anticipating or expecting. So you can see that June, May, April, even March, received numbers of waters that we have not predicted in the past. So it's not surprise that when you look at the chart, you see the peak right there taking place during the period of 2015 as a result of the amount of water that was being discharged from this mine. The same thing goes for Batcock, which is right there, right? All the way from 2012 to 2016, the blue line being the aderage of selenium that you get to see, right? And here, Flatbed. And three, the selenium levels being all the way. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, and at least a follow-up, I'm at Minerals North Conference last year.
Yes.
They actually got into further depth on different ways to observe the amount of selenium that's, selenium's in the area. And one of them, it was referred to by a biologist as a buck soup.
Tell us, Confer.
That's what we have.
You have the, okay, because that seemed to be extremely accurate and.
It is actually extremely accurate.
At the tone, please state your name, followed by the number of times.
The fantastic thing here is that what we have is a number of bags that are in this cylinders and are consuming, are really hungry of selenium, so they keep eating the selenium. But the interesting part of this is that as a result of, of the chemistry that is happening, there is an effect, which is the trucks dying off and accumulating themselves and creating a clod.
Yeah.
The problem that we're having, or I guess the problem that our contractors are having with the demonstration water treatment facility at this point, is that the trucks love selenium so much, the clod is actually becoming so big that it's not allowing the water to filter out. So while we're still meeting standards of reducing the selenium to less than five ppb's, right? The problem is that they cannot just release as much water as they were hoping to release. So we're starting actually different things. Instead of bags, can we use, for example, acidic acid, which has been tested in other areas of the province, to see whether that would be more beneficial? Or can we use both? Can we use acidic acid in one phase and, and the bags in another phase so that it reduces the amount of clod and allows for more water to come in?
Okay, and there's a, it seemed to be there was another part to it too, where you actually collect the insects.
Yeah.
That, and you put them into a similar thing into a, and it tells you everything that these insects, and that's a wide, wide scope of insects, that actually, it tells you exactly what's in the water, what's in the soil around it.
Yeah.
That type of thing.
I am not correct myself in that case, I think you were talking about insect themselves, I'm so sorry.
Yes, yes.
What actually biochemistry.
Right, yeah.
Okay, perfect. I have not seen that one. There's been discussions about strumps, for example, being used for selenium levels, but I'd be more than happy to go and review that information to see how applicable it would be or not.
It looked very promising at the time, that's.
One of the things that we're doing, we put forward in the selenium management plan, is making sure that we use the mine at this point to test different technologies. Why not? This is the best step to do.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, well, thank you very much for that.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you. Okay.
Unfortunate, yes? I just want to check, Counselor, how can you hear us?
Yeah, I can, you bet. I'm just keeping it on mute here to cut down on the sound.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your business. First one, eight one one, is a golf tournament donation to Sunrise Golf Tournament, which is screaming evil, I think. Can I get the recommendation?
Recommendation that council receives is for sort of recognition?
Okay. Secondary for that? Easy. Okay. Hey, the aderage monitoring information. Information or discussion?
For the Skyshitters.
Okay, you want to start?
Yeah, I just, I just, I think I have a big, big, big recommendation, if I may. The council approved a $2,500 donation to Northern Rock and Atlantic City project.
Okay, secondary? Any more discussion on that? On favor?
Just.
Hey, yeah.
Jordan, I'm just wondering when we, when we send the approval to him or let him approve through you or whatever, can we just mention about maybe him filling out the job in each? So, thank you.
Hey, the point three, Chamber of Commerce Christmas parade recommendation? Counselor Kai.
We recommend that the district of Tumble Ridge grab permission to the Chamber of Commerce to have the streets closed during the Christmas parade and that the district of Tumble Ridge provides resources and labor to close streets July 30th from 10:00 AM till 11:30 AM.
Okay. Any more discussion on that?
Just wondering regards to, two things that I didn't see in here, and I talked to Mr. Wall earlier today, so I would bring it forward. One is closing off the street between Shop Easy and TR News. There's usually two pantry breakfasts that happen there, one on Saturday and one on Sunday, one done by the lines and one done by the business. And only, they don't request anything from the, from the district with regards to labor, get approval to close that down on their own. I'm not sure if we can add to that one. And the second thing I have is street cleaner maybe being, falling in grade to deal with anything left by large animals.
Yeah, if Counselor just wants to make an amendment to the motion about the street closures, if you want to direct us to have the street cleaner, it's something that we can do, it's likely going to involve overtime for one of our employees to come and run it, so if you want to approve that, then, yeah, yeah.
You want that as a separate motion?
It's, it's up to council whether you want to combine them or not. I would say if they combine all the street closures into one, and then if you want to spend money, make a motion outside for that.
Okay with that? So we've got amended amendment to the motion, so we'll deal with that first.
So I would just have somebody make the amendment first.
So they're making a motion to include closing the street between Shop Easy Foods and TR Newspaper, a little street there, with no cost being included to the district. The businesses will take care of it.
Secondary for that? Any more discussion on that?
Just, just for clarification, is there no cost involved to the district?
There's no, sorry, there's none of the shopping carts are flagged in. Just want to make sure council's aware of it.
All in favor? If the second one would be the, yes.
Now we're back to the motion to close the streets.
Main motion, okay? Any more discussion on the main motion? Any more discussion on the main motion? All in favor? O. Okay, so that takes us to the street cleaner. You want to make that motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion that if there is any large animals in our parade, horses I guess, that we supply the, the street sweeper to follow behind the parade to clean up.
Hours?
We should have put a dollar figure on it now. It's likely going to have to be a double time, just because of our union rules, it's going to be double time, minimum four hours to call out. Now, I can see if we have other people on shift who can run it, and that cost may increase, but I think right now it would be safe to assume we're looking at... $250 to be safe. So you could say up to $250 to street sweeper.
To include up to $250 to cover what we use.
Okay, second there for that? Counselor Scott? Any more discussion on that?
I think the last time, we get people running up grabbing it and throwing it into the potato birds. Anyway.
I, I don't, personally, I don't remember seeing the street sweeper behind it. Probably some kind of mess out there. I've never really noticed it, never pretty...
Just get to go over it in the off nines.
Yeah, okay. Okay, all in favor? Opposed? Okay, I take this eight point four, update on district, county authorities, recommendation? Counselor Casey?
Worship, I would move the recommendation as presented. Oh, but as presented.
Second for that? Counselor Kai, any discussion on that? All in favor? O.
Just a point of order, spelling, spelling of last name. I think that, does that, I think that probably matters in signing authority, wouldn't it?
Whose name is it spelled?
Seokai's.
Oh, okay.
What, what, did something felt wrong there?
Just a last name. And I guess if it was written down that way in signing authority, it wouldn't be valid, I would think.
Got that? Okay. Thank you, Counselor Scott. Okay, all in favor? O. Eight point five, this is another golf tournament, but it's TR Care's nonprofit group. We've done this before. I get the recommendation. Okay.
So the district, Tumble Ridge, through screaming eagle, the way the Greenpeace TR cares to host the Texas Holden Golf Tournament, for 50 participants maximum, and that the district provides a donation amount of $250 to cover the costs of the duty charged for the catering services.
Second there for that? Okay, discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Eight point six, finance officer appointment, recommendation for that? Counselor Casey?
Thank you, Worship, and recommend that Council appoint Laura Sanders as finance officer for the district of Tumble Ridge, as described under Appointment of Municipal Officers Bylaw Number 582.
Second there for that? Okay, discussion?
Just out of curiosity, how many applicants did we have?
Mr. Wall? And I'm sorry for not getting back to you on that. I was waiting to, the, where it went out to. She's on vacation right now. Five or six or seven in, somewhere around there.
And were they all out of town, or were there some local?
There were some local and some out of town.
Okay. Okay, all in favor? Opposed? Okay, I think this is in order to motion. And first one, nine point one, Counselor Casey, that's yours?
I said, I don't know what required, as a matter of, of trying to set a date of where we can have governance workshop for members as well, and us as a group and so forth, and establish a date. Thought that that would be well worthwhile, and having had some discussions with our CEO, there's qualified people, they wouldn't be the same that we have been, that we've used in the past, but in terms of how we operate, and in terms of our responsibilities and so on and so forth, I think it would be time and money well spent, and especially the discussions that will evolve amongst ourselves as well. So hence the reason for that motion.
Okay. Yes, you'd still want to ask, just because it's in the notice to motion, you'd still want to ask Counselor Casey to, you know, motion it.
Fair enough. The Council approves funding not allocated in the budget in an amount of up to $10,000 for governance workshop.
Second there for that? Counselor Kai, any other discussion?
I would be for this if there was guarantee that all of Council attends. If there's just going to be a few, I, I don't think it's worthwhile pursuing it. And perhaps it's maybe something we can look at, providing the funding for 2017, because in September through to December, I think our calendar's going to be pretty full. We have trouble trying to get everybody together as a group during the budget time. And September, there's UVCM, so that's my only thoughts on that, is if we don't all attend, then it's, it's not worth doing.
Go ahead.
You worshiped and, and I appreciate the comments from, from Counselor Scott. When we had set this up the last time to be done, there were a number of people, some that couldn't make it, and we couldn't get a full house. And this was after we had planned it, and planned it, and planned it far down the future. I don't believe it's possible for us to get a full, all members of Council to come up with a date that they are willing to, to make it a priority. That, that's my biggest concern, and I was the person that said to hell with it the last time relative to cancel out for that very same reason. Not going to have a full Council here, and I fully agree that if that's at all possible, that's the preference. But quite frankly, I don't have any faith that that's going to happen. And I think that the other concern I have is the fact that if, for those that do show up, and we can have a heart-to-heart with regards to how we handle our business here, not only on behalf of those that don't show up but are here, I think it would be very, very worthwhile for us to do that. That would at least give us an opportunity as individual elected members of Council that if things are coming up by those that were not in attendance, that we'd be able to at least have a conversation, say that's out of order, or we're not going to waste time on it simply because you couldn't be there. So, so that was the reason for bringing it forward again. I think it's something that's really worthwhile. But I made a mistake, I think, the last time, rather than say anybody that can make it to make a motion is that, come on and show up, rather than try to wait to get seven people involved. I just don't think that happens here. It hasn't happened in the past. So that's my concern. Either that or drop out of that. I certainly for one won't bring it up again. We're not going to go forward with it on a date. That's my own concern. Waste of time.
Thank you, Worship. Just on, I know we planned one previous, Mr. Fees, I just mentioned. I know I was unable to attend, schedule, and so on. What happened though? Just curious in regards to be paid for that? Council, no pay? I'm just curious if we...
Mr. Wall? We canceled, we still had to pay. When we canceled out, I think it was only 15 hours, no, it's just something like that. The, the contractors that we hired were sitting in hotels, ready to catch an airplane in the morning. The expenses had been done, so...
I just found it hard, and I think Counselor Casey has mentioned it out as well in regards to trying to get all seven people, their schedules change, and people running with the main, whether dates are set or not, things do change, there's jobs, there're businesses. I think if anything's going to come up, it should come up in the 2017 budget.
I agree with Counselor Scott and Counselor Casey, because I think we have to have it. But I also think that any thing that we cover there is covered by all of Council, and if you aren't there, that's too bad, you have to live with it. That's, that's the way I see it, because I agree that, I don't think we're going to get seven people. Counselor Casey, you have something else to say?
Do you want, do you want to add a comment? I mean, it's the same old story. We all have, we all have other responsibilities, we all have other things to do. Obviously, it's not a priority, something else. We're not talking a life or death situation here at all. But when it comes to dealing with the protocols and the methods and so forth, and I think it's imperative that perhaps we give a little more thought on canceling something else than having it here. And that's my thought on it. It's either a priority or it isn't.
I think you have to set September, next time to look at it, but end of this year and beginning next, so... Yes, Counselor Kai?
Just, I mean, I'm in total agreement, I think everybody has to be here. But I don't think that, that should maybe water down the fact that this is something that we drastically need. I mean, we're, we're going on Facebook, working on things like that, and we're putting comments on there that are detrimental to a decision that Council just made. And that, I mean, related to the first thing, George Cuff, one of the very first things he said, that is a, that was a no-no. And, you know, whether it's inadvertently, or whether it's, you know, mistake, you know, you're, you're, what you're trying to say is taken wrongly, it's because, that happens all the time, and when you go on social media, you don't get the true, the true meaning across what you're trying to say. So I think, I think that has the potential to cause us some pretty good, some, some major problems down the road.
Do you agree?
All, all are, all are, I mean, as long as something, because something works, and everyone's, if you're not there, and you agree to kind of go along with the rules that's been made by the rest of Council, and for that too, that makes sense.
I think that too. We can go read that. We have a little company. Counselor Kai?
Just one more comment. I think the whole governance and staff and the whole admin and council working together is changing due to Facebook and stuff like that. So we're kind of in a whole new era of how things are being done. So I myself, like, I would be all for it if we can all attend, because then everyone's kind of on the same page. But if not, then I would rather see that money going towards opening up to the ICE a couple of weeks early or something like that. Like, there's other areas that, you know, for, you know, budgeting, that we can spend that. So I would be in favor if everybody attends. I would not. I'm not.
Counselor Casey?
Just, just a comment on that, to Counselor Scott, and I appreciate the comments that we made. You know, the, the problem is not setting a date. The problem is somebody not showing up. That's the problem. And why even bother? And because we've tried a number of approaches, as I recall, correct me if I'm wrong, some far enough down the road, everybody's got a clear calendar at the moment, barring unforeseen circumstances and deaths and all of those kinds of things, treat it as a priority, set a date, everybody says, yes, beat it. That, that's all. So the problem, the, the problem is not meeting that commitment, scheduling it around it, and, and using whatever reason you want to use, oh, I'm just sort of, that would have to be a priority because it was a death event. But we're not talking that. We're simply talking about setting a date, being there, and schedule our own activities all around that, but treat it as a priority. Otherwise, we're not going to have the meeting take place, have waited for all setup. That's all I'm saying. Whatever you want, it's, come with me.
And the lack of this has caused us lots of problems in our... And I think, I think I'm for having it, setting a date, and everybody trying to be there. We've got five people there, positions of those five people, what we do. Okay, I have another question there. All in favor of this? Opposed? Okay. Nine point two. This is Counselor Kirby, and she's not here. Where do we go with this?
So Counselor, if nobody wants to take up the motion, then it can just be moved on to the next agenda, or Counselor Kirby can make it herself, if someone would like to make the motion because they believe in it, or just in her stead, that is okay as well?
I would like to see it moved to the next agenda, and Counselor Kirby can talk to it. That's my feeling, and it's...
So am I.
Ready? Put that on next agenda. This is special meeting, Counselor's business, is that part of this? Mr. Wall?
I put it on there just because we moved to regular meetings, so this was in place of the regular meeting first in, in August. So it's up to Council if you just don't want it to Counselor's business, just a quick, nothing to report, and we can move on.
I'd like, I'd like to do this as quick as we can, since it's a special meeting, so it's okay with Council, we'll just bypass Counselor's business? Okay. Okay, we got nobody here for question and answer period, so we will go to a closed meeting with some of your recommendations. Okay, you approved the recommendation? Center, Counselor Kai, on favor? Okay, does anybody want to do a thing? Do you want five minutes, or do you want that?